Welcome to Hexham Town Council here at Prior for Hexham Abbey on Monday, eighth of September, twenty twenty five at six AM. I'm the mayor, I'm councillor Derek Kennedy and I'll be chairing this meeting. So we are going to move first of all to item number seven on the agenda, which is to receive a presentation from Johnny Hannah about the new interpretation plan for the old jail and how the community can be involved. So over to you, Johnny, if you can maybe take ten fifteen minutes and then we'll do some questions and answers.
Absolutely. So thanks for your time this evening. It's my third visit for this new project I've started in Hexham. It's called Tilted the Jail. So my job is to transport, is what it means, transport the old jail so that perhaps there's more visitors, it becomes a, not a new museum, but it becomes an updated museum, I'm not sure. Early days, so we'll see what happens. But you've all got to be booklets, so do have a read of them. Which is going to prove to you, I'm an illustrator, I'm a commercial artist, a slice of book covers from over the years that I've worked on, various publishers. So I work to the briefs, like I've got for Hexham, but often with shorter briefs, like book covers. My last book cover I did called Queer the Folk by a Welsh artist called Russ Williams. Folk and folklore plays a big part in what I do, something I find fascinating. Yeah, we'll talk more about that in a wee minute. So I've also done my own books now and again, did a book a few years ago, ten years ago now, called Greetings from Darktown. I live in Southampton, I'm a Scotsman living in Southampton, but I live also in a place called Darktown, which I won't bore you with too much tonight. It's my imaginary place where all sorts of things happen. But this book, you mix and roll together copies of this book, it's, we'll see, it's a great fun to work on. I do do a record cover, again, as a personal artist, jobs come in, jobs go out. My agent calls me up and I kind of spring into action. James Yorkshire, fantastic singer-songwriter from Fife, I'm a Fifer as well, so he asked me who's covering for them and he said, just make sure there's a cat on it, so I've been in cats. I had a great honour of doing a set of stamps for Royal Mail, that was now six years ago, I think. So a job came in, or a phone call came in from my agent saying, do you want to do a set of test stamps for Royal Mail? Don't get two, they might fall through, because jobs sometimes do. So I did one test, did two tests, I did eight tests, and instead you've got the job. So I'm still thrilled to kind of have eight of my designs on these stamps. The curious customers, again, all about folk customs in the UK that happen once a year. None based in Hexham, I'm afraid. I do a lot of printmaking as well, so that's been screen printing and posters for a client in New York called Ghost Town Orchestra. So I'm a very kind of hands-on person, I think, as a creative artist, illustrator. It's all very hands-on. The last time I was in town, that was back in July, I did some printing in the old jail itself, on the spot, we printed tote bags for people who came along, so they were free. So we're trying to get this project on the go and it's early days, but as we've discussed a minute, I mustn't say it's early days, otherwise I won't get stuff done. But it's exciting to kind of be back in Hexham again and being involved in dealing with people and trying to get some information from you, because I need your help, that's the important thing. So I've got a new exhibition starting next Friday, next Saturday, sorry, in Brighton. So after I leave Hexham on Thursday morning, I'm going straight to Hartlepool, to the Northern School of Art, who have been involved with it before, to do some more printmaking there. This is the Darktown Film Club, again, of course, it's Darktown, looking at films. I'm going to print this on Friday, or Thursday, my hallmaster Billy Welder, fantastic filmmaker, Private Office of Sherlock Holmes with Robert Stephens, Sherlock Holmes is a great film. So that's what I'm doing for the rest of the week, I'm not here. Now again, I paint objects, that's good fun. My work is very physical, I think. My agent says to me, how about we buy you a car and you paint it? I was, let's do that, what the hell. So we bought a car off Gumtree, three hundred and fifty quid. The joke is I can't drive, but my wife can, thankfully. But we bought this car and then I effectively vandalized it over the week, so it became the Darktown Turtle Taxi. So objects play a big part in what I do. It's not just all kind of stuff on paper, it's a mixture of this, that and the other. So six years ago, I got a phone call from my agent, said, and said, there's a, the museum in Woodhorne, called Woodhorne Museum in Ashington, you wanted to apply for this commission? And they want someone to explore Northumberland folklore. And I said, well, I will get it, you know, I don't know Northumberland at all, I haven't actually been there, why would you choose me? My wife said, put a proposal in, let's see what happens. So I did, and then I got a job. So twenty nineteen, Northumberland folk kicked off. It's supposed to be ready for twenty twenty, obviously twenty twenty things will be pear-shaped in the world, so it's extended through to twenty twenty-one. And I did four exhibitions in Northumberland, Berwick Museum, Hartley Gallery, Woodhorne Museum in Ashington, Hexham Jail, and Maudreth Chantry Bag Pick Museum. So it was a great job to get, but it's a kind of two-year commission effectively. I'm often used to much shorter deadlines, but this was a real luxury to be given two years to explore the folklore of Northumberland. And it was great fun. And it made me fall in love with this county. To get the work done, I went out busking, I kind of handed over your booklets, some of what I'm doing now, only not busking. So in Hexham Times Square, at the market square, I did some busking one day, handed booklets, got some responses back, and said, you know, I've got this project, I need your help. Now, that's the important thing, it's a kind of community-based project and I can't do it on my own because I'm not from here and I don't live here. So they've got these weird kind of letters back from people, these weird Northumberland stories, they were great fun. Some very fun, some flippants, a couple of very dark ones, one I couldn't include actually, all good details. But it was great, it was wonderful. The mix I got, this is still my favourite, a recipe for a cocktail. So, and this, I forget who makes this cocktail, so I never have any lime kicking about, but anyway, so maybe tonight you can try this. So it's just great, people have been having a bit of a laugh with it. But it's all folklore, I think folklore is often deemed to be knights and dragons and stuff, the vampire woman and whatnot, but I think it can also be a recipe for the cocktail. My exhibition in Hexham was called Hexham Maselany. I found it in Hexham and hereabouts, it was a kind of mishmash of things, so there was no kind of central theme per se, it was a mixture of this, this, that and the other. So it became the Hexham Maselany in the Old Jail. I've got a friend, a friend of mine called Vicky Peeps, who's based in Slaly, just not far from here, and he was sending me snippets from the Hexham Kurant. And I've got that bits, I don't know if it's happened maybe once a month of ten years ago, twenty years ago, fifty years ago, and they were a goldmine of stories. These snippets of, you know, a prude of man was arrested or having been intoxicated, you know, and it was just great. So I turned these into little kind of fake Hexham tans, that's my kind of, my way of illustrating them, so these kind of laser-cut fake gloves, which is what Hexham is famous for, with my illustrations illustrating these wonderful wee snippets of Hexham from yesterday here. I did a wee book called Spooky Hexham Heads, all about the Hexham Heads, fantastic story. Everything Paranormal, big fan of, Uncanny etc. It was great fun to explore this sort of thing of the Hexham Heads and then, once the Hexham Heads were dug up, all these strange phenomena happened around them, they were passing somebody in Southampton, it was like that life, talked to Anne Reid, the minute she got them, strange things started to happen to her. It was just a great, great story. How true it is, I don't know, I don't really care, it was just such a good story. This is my room in Hexham Old Jail, that was my hallmaster Jonathan Martin, who I found fascinating, was a kind of folklore character, this kind of quite anti-authoritarian person who, deeply religious but didn't like organized religion, his most famous thing was he set fire to Yorkminster all the time, but I find him a very, very sort of thrilling person. That's me and sort of my cutout, life-size, bigger than life-size version of the Countess of Derby Water, this woman who pitched up at Dills and Castle and said, this is mine. People said, I'm not sure that is, it wasn't, but, you know, she put up a good fight. So again, somebody who, you know, is steeped in a hope of kind of folklore of kind of recklessness and all this, I find fascinating. I did a big coffin, the hallmaster Joe the Quilter, based in Warden, the best quote-maker in the world, it seemed at the time, and it's a five-foot coffin that he opened up and, I saw quite a lot during exhibition, but nobody wanted to buy a five-foot coffin with a dead man inside it, so it's still for sale if you want to try it. That was my exhibition at Woodhorne Museum. So Woodhorne, being a mining museum, I devised, I said to the curators, can I create a fake miner's social club? So I called it the Darktown Miner's Social Club, because I've always been in Darktown, don't forget, and so that was it. Music plays a big part in everything I do, I love music, huge fan of music. I had the great kind of honour of buying old albums by people at Catherine Ferrier, who's from Preston but still northern, and she's also based famous, the great song, Kill Girl, was wonderful, bit of a north-east singer-songwriter. Speaking of music, I got an email one day out of the blue from Liz Conwy, who I think she's based in Allendeale, and she said, I don't know if you know, but my husband's got a famous singer-songwriter called Terry Conwy. Looked up Terry Conwy, didn't know about Terry, then realised that, oh, thanks, they've run a few songs on the first album, and so I did the screen transfer homage to Terry, wonderful singer-songwriter. At Woodhorne Museum, I did a kind of, a couple of things outside, not much, but I found that fascinating, the fact that, you know, you can move out of the museum and be more adventurous, if you like. It's still there, I believe, but weather won't these days, but anyway. All the stories I got laughing, people are turning into a newspaper now, I can't give you a copy of that, because there's some in the old jail, so I'll drop, I'll drop enough to Penny, you can, of read yourself. This is Northumberland Folk Messenger, with all the stories that I kind of collated and then illustrated into this newspaper that we published, so it was great fun to do. There's my realisation of the Gaza cocktail, so, no, as a subject of review, maybe it was strictly part of my thumb, but we can venture those slightly, so, so there we go. Did now another newspaper to coincide with the merchandise of celebrating Northumberland women. I found it now, this might not be the case, but I found there to be a disproportionate amount of strong women in Northumberland, I don't know if you can agree with me, but I think that's, I think that's the case, so, celebrating. I bought a piano and painted that, again, I'm happy to vandalize anything, that was very fun to do. I wrote a song for the project called The Northumberland ABC, which is inspired by a song called The Socialist ABC by Alex Glasgow, a fantastic bit of singing as well, that's a song right. When I was doing this, I kept thinking, this could be a character, I'm not from here, I don't live here, who do I think I am? So as the museums opened up again, from the cocoon of lockdowns, I was quite worried thinking this could all go pear-shaped, but I got some feedback and I was quite pleased. So colourful, thought-provoking, how much people work to keep us all going and how people are often badly paid, in poor conditions and under-valued. Don't forget, this is straight after the lockdowns and whatnot, key workers, the key workers today, what an amazing portrait of the colourful nature of this community. So I had a sigh of relief when I started to get feedback from people on that, so I was quite pleased. That, like another commission, another kind of regional-based commission, so one of the curators at Woodhorne got a new job at Hartlepool and said, you want to do something similar in Hartlepool, I was like, I'd love to, I've never been to Hartlepool, let's do it. So I went there, pitched up there one day, began to similar research, chat to people, called it shit-builts and fisherfolk, two things at Hartlepool, there's still some fishing going on, not so much, shit-building is long gone, but my homage to the town of Hartlepool. We booklets again, hand about, try and get some feedback, again, involve, trying to speak to people is the key thing, and getting stuff back from them is so important, which is why I'm here tonight. Somebody said to me, have you heard about Captain Turquoise, the Captain Cutlass, who had a teddy boy gang called the Turquoise Gang, I thought that sounds good. So in the sixties, there was the Turquoise Gang in Hartlepool, and they went down to London one day to sort of the Cray Brothers apparently. What happened is kind of, you get mixed messages, but I think nothing much happened. But I found that fascinating, the idea of a teddy boy, Subcrops are a big fan of, so that's my realisation of him. I did some printmaking on the spot for the Hartlepool Folk Festival back in twenty-three, twenty-two that was, that's where it was great. That's me on the spot printing in a tent with some of the people who was at the festival, it was free, the deal was I would give you a print and you would give me a story about Hartlepool, and it seemed to work, so. As an awful joke, I'm dressed up like a French sailor in that picture. Now, the history of Hartlepool, French sailors don't go down so bad, I don't know if you know, I managed to get through a life, so. Of course, your folk club called the Foggy Fuzz Folk Club, and we'd all kind of sit around and sing songs, I'd never seen them sing songs very badly, but again, meeting people like that would just be, that was an Athenian club in Hartlepool. That's my hallmaster, I painted a guitar, it was a lashing for the exhibition, great fun to work on, lovely people. There's a great pub in the headman called the Fisherman's Arms, they have the Fisherman's Arms in Hartlepool, it's a wonderful pub, and so it's a real kind of hub of the community, so that's my homage to them, as a tattooed sailor. Fish Annie was a local Hartlepool character who would roam around every Friday with a baby's pram filled with fish and then sell it. So, I mean, long gone obviously, but, you know, health and safety obviously, but what a great character she must have been, so. This was my homage to the Central Marine Engine Works, based in Hartlepool, a place in Gray Shittgar, who make the best ships' engines known to mankind apparently, again, all kind of wet when the shipbuilding stopped. My big seven-metre fake ship that hung, hangs from the ceiling, the roof of the art gallery, that was it. So eighty-seven shipbuilding starts, by sixty-three it's all gone and it never comes back. Another folk club, I'm sorry to go off on, I'll be a bit, hurry up, another folk club I'd go to in Wilberston with the Wilson family, the Wilson family, fantastic, family singers, got a great song called The Running Fox, again, very anti-authoritarian, I think. I got to know two chaps who brewed beer, so I walked into one of them one night in the pub in the Fisherman's Arms, it was early, and he said, what do you do? I'm an illustrator, what do you do? I brew beer, oh, that's good. Next year, to fancy do something together, he goes, yeah, okay. So we devised this plan, where I designed labels for the beers and then did pay me in beer and had an exhibition. So it was great, wonderful, nice to hear, hear images as packaging, if you like. That was the finished poster. Again, when it came to the finished time, I was a bit scared thinking, what have I done here? Now, I don't have speakers, but if I play this, you might be able to hear it, I've turned the volume up full, so.
Amazing, amazing, I think it's, we're amazing, they're a guy from, and they're the only possible for a guy from outside of the area to capture what is captured and present it in so many different ways within their ambassade, and I really am, it's a phenomenal exhibition in my eyes, as a Hartlepool layer, yes.
I didn't care to see that, I didn't know. That was twenty twenty-three when the tall ships came to town. Another kind of offshoot was I played in a band and I said, can we play in this place called the Small Crafts Association in Hartlepool? We got a gig and that was good fun. Again, it's that thing of what have I not done, I've done with records, so the band made the record, great fun to do, better speed up a little bit, sorry. But last few slides, when it comes to influences, this film has been a massive influence on me as well, I've seen the Red Bull with Tony Hancock, it's a gem of a British cinema. It made me want to be an artist, which is what I've done. I love England, I'm a Scotsman living in Southampton, I love England, I really do, and it's maybe not unusual, but it's not usual, but I really, I moved here a long time ago and I've never thought of even going back to Scotland, I'll go back and visit obviously. There's certain English, kind of quintessentially English things that I'm fascinated by, I love a good chalk horse, I love a good, a good depression film like Kes, you can't beat a bit of Kes, a bit of Ken Och, classic. No, there's all, that's again, one hundred percent working-class phenomenon that kind of northerners took on, black soul music, brilliant. I love a good pair of shoes. As I often joke, no matter how much I spend on shoes, I'm still working class, but I have this meant, particularly if something money on shoes, the pair of trippers, they're very good, good sales. I've got a new playlist on Spotify to get this project on the go, so it's kind of prison-inspired songs, jail of the chocolate, an obvious one, it's all there, I fought the law, both versions, The Clash and Bobby Fuller. So when I handed over my booklets on my last visit back in July, and you've all got a wee booklet for this, some will spare if you want some, and I need your help, you know, and I need to kind of spread the word for me, please, if you don't mind. And kind of, my kind of reinvention of the museum will not just be about Crime and Punishment, because having chatted to the curators, maybe only so much we can do with that, there'll be a lot of that, don't get me wrong, but I think I also want to kind of create a room that's a kind of like a homage to Hexham again, not to similar to what I did last time, but more in-depth and with new stories. The Hexham Heads may well make another appearance, we'll see. So yeah, and the other thing is, you know, it's kind of, it's what, you know, what do you want to see in the museum? People have fed back to me things that want more events, want it to be a place that people will congregate more. I did a presentation on my last visit about how to be in the Forum Cinema, because the Hexham Jail shuts at a certain time, so does it become more of a kind of community hub than the museum? I don't know, we'll see, it's up to you. There's my details, yeah, send a wee booklet, get in touch, I think that's it, yeah.
Thank you very much, you're right, we'll go to questions, any questions? Stephen?
Congratulations. An artist, presumably you're an artist in residence as such, and how long will your tenure be?
Aye, well, the project begins, they've gone back in January officially, it's got paused a wee bit, so I've gone until spring twenty-seven. So I visit now and again, because it's not in residence per se, you know, I can have, I'll come up here maybe once every two months and do small events. So I've got a long time, but again, I mustn't say I've got a long time, otherwise I won't get things done. So I'm starting to kind of, I'm at that gathering stage, so I need kind of stories, snippets of information, bits and bobs, I'll start to gather things and then begin to realise, now, will that become a banner, will it become a big painting, will it become a screen print, I don't know. So how it will come out, in my, I've got a bit of a plan now, but it could, it's, yeah, it could go either way.
And what's your market as such, is it locals, is it tourists? And at the end of your tenure, what would you consider your legacy?
People I spoke to on my last visit, I spoke to a lot of people who seem to be from this area, and a few people said, I went there when I was at school, then I went back to the museum and my kids were at school, I've not got access, you know. So I think my, hopefully I'm trying to get people through the door more, you know, more visitors. And that's partly because the museum doesn't change much at the minute, you know, it's maybe not changed, obviously it changes again, but maybe not a great deal. So I think I'm kind of looking at people from the area, from Hexhamshire, if you want to use that phrase, but also people, you know, people maybe come back because it's a new, a new thing to look at, new exhibition for example. I've got an idea, but I might have a kind of rotating gallery in the Hexham Museum, we don't know, it's all working there. In terms of legacy, I think it's, yeah, I think it'd be nice to kind of, the museum is used more, I think it's underused, I think is the one line, under-visited and underused. If I can get more people through that door, not just me, but you know, with everybody's help, that would be, I'd be quite pleased, so.
Any more questions, Stephen?
Thanks, great museum, I've got two little girls and I go there and we have a lot of fun, and they're really loving my work as well, I think it's really great what you've been able to do. What's your deadline for getting comments and things about that?
And I think with a project like this, we're kind of looking at different, different kind of stages of it. This is my kind of gathering, research time. So the museum is saying maybe by springtime, that's it, that's the cut point. But I think, I find, I think with both Hartlepool and previous Northumberland projects, things can keep going. You know, somebody, somebody, somebody gave me a story in November next year, I could get in, you know, I think I'd work very quickly, so, so I'm happy to, I think, yeah, I'm a big fan of letting things happen when they happen, but certainly, sooner the better, but there's, there's room to maneuver there, I think.
So kind of, really deadline, but ideally, stuff in by Christmas?
That should be good, yeah.
And kind of, local sort of folklore, is it, would it go as far as Corbridge?
Oh, yeah, it did, of course, it did, yeah, Allendeale.
Allendeale, so Hexhamshire, go west of the border.
Hexhamshire, yeah.
Where the jail used to serve, isn't it, where people used to get locked up from, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, all the time.
Yeah, thanks for that, I think I've had that cocktail, it was good. So, we were gathering stories with like this sort of project in Hexmeath recently, that was sponsored by the National Lottery, and there was lots of stuff came together under that umbrella, and it's still going, so away in there is Grace at number twenty-eight, who curated that and wove together all those amazing, and some of them are hilarious, climbing on top of towers and releasing balloons and knocking over milk cars and all that sort of. So that's definitely the way you need to go, but also our work for Blood X Books, so we publish poetry locally, and I say poetry, but our North East Anthology, which has the stories in of Tyndale, it has Terry Conway in and W H Jordan and Maud Knopfler and all of them, and Sting and all of those people, so it's got like, there's a whole section on Tyndale poems and stories, and I'm happy to give you a copy of that, if that helps as well. But I think, the thing is with the jail is that it is, it's had a crowd of children in, as councillor Kitchen says, who are all of a certain age, and then once they've seen it within Hexham, they don't tend to come back, so going to like the older market through the school maybe as well is a good way, because they've got a great art department at QE and maybe bringing them down to do some sessions there to reintroduce them to their history again, their jail, because, yeah, they wouldn't have been for a while, I would imagine.
No, I'm happy to do any of the visits, school visits, my big C grade is actually, but number, number twenty, aye. So yeah, so I think, but, yeah, I'm happily do, anything, happily speak to anybody to kind of get information. So about that book, the poetry thing sounds great, I'd love to get a copy of that, yeah.
And I'll pass it on to Penny or?
Ah, yeah, that'd be good, yeah. Yeah, I think as an illustrator, I often direct to ones, you know, I'm often doing book covers or I've done a couple of poetry books as well, so ones are the good start point, songs, poems, anything like that is a good, it's goldmine, so.
Have you?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a conversation before, so I think it's just a great idea, because the jail is a public space that is just underutilised, but it's totally full of history that we are busy in making anyway, so I love the fluid nature of it. But, so I think what, it's not really a question actually, it's a comment, that we can actually point you in various directions, but please feel free to ask us to do various things. So we, we post things on social media, you know, so it can be, it's got to be an iterative process and it will continue as, as you want it to, but we reach most corners, I think we do. So, yeah, that's a great project, thank you.
Anybody else, anybody else, anybody else? Right, 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 just to add to the work, next year we're doing a celebration of the Viking raids on Hexham, so maybe something for you to maybe recognise possible in your, in your works, so that would be something, we're going to be part of it at the Hexham Town Council, so if you want to keep in touch with us, we can, we can do that. We did, two thousand and twenty-two, we did the eight hundred years of the Margaret Place having its, having its charter, and we did a big piece on sort of Hexham through, through the ages, did like a piece of that, although there was some history of the age, potentially to pull from that, because we did a, we did, you know, the key models told us through the last eight hundred years of Hexham, that has quite a lot of history, but obviously it will be reserved tonight. Okay, well, thank you so much, very kind, thank you. Gran, that was very good, great. Okay, so, so we'll go back to item number two, which is public participation, so I will invite anybody from the floor, from all members of the public to bring any questions or anything that would like to, please give your name and stand up and explain what you want to do.
Hello, my name's Claire Wando, I am here on behalf of the Forum Cinema today, I have actually emailed you personally, but just to get a bit more response and energy, I've come along to ask if you would please all vote for the Forum Cinema to become Cinema of the Year, and would you please urge your constituents and as many people as you are able to, to vote for us, so it's not just you, it's all the access to people that you have. We are up against a hundred and twenty-nine other cinemas, some of them are absolutely huge cinemas, like the Prince Charles in London, we think we deserve this for the work that we do in the community, for getting emerging creatives on the screen, for getting community groups on the screen, for the events and stuff we run with them, we, we deserve it for the vast array of films we're able to get on the screen, the screen cinema, a portion of our profits go back into the three years to each year, last year we helped on the startup for Father Christmas, and we are just negotiating what we're going to be putting back into the community this year. And we run an annual film festival that reaches out into the most isolated parts of North umberland, therefore the most isolated parts of the country, so that film festival is pretty important in March, we think that people should vote for us because this would be wonderful to bring home to Hexham Art Town, this is a massive, massive, it's the biggest cinema accolade you can get, to bring that home to Hexham as Hexham becomes Hexham Art Town would be fantastic, and there was another reason that I completely, that's what I forgot, it's very, oh, it's investment, we hope that that will bring extra investment into the cinema, which means therefore our profits will be kept and towards going back into the community, and we do still need some capital expenditure in the cinema, so could I please urge you to make use of the artefacts I've given you, and please would you vote yourselves, and everybody else that you know, and now in contact, go to vote for us, thank you very much.
Would you send it in eight, four steps long, on our social media?
Yes, indeed.
Terrific, okay.
Twenty-second of September.
So not long, right, we shall do that, excellent, thank you very much. Claire, yeah, yes, yes.
I was just linking the two things together, is the jail used as a venue for the festival at all?
Under consideration, I've received a price for it and I'm working out what we can do. Under consideration, I've received a price for it and I'm working out what we can do. We do normally use the little wall, which is part of your jail. But whether we'll be allowed, I don't know.
Anyone else with more presentation?
Do you want to come ask a question, because if so, yes.
Right, apologies for absence. Michael and Nigel, okay. Any disclosures of interest? Okay, any dispensations? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting, which was held on Monday, fourteenth of July, twenty twenty-five. I'll just go through each of those pages. So page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. And page five and six. Okay, no commentary? Very good. Right. Right, so that's that. We now move on to item eight. Okay, so this is to receive an update on the old fire station. Receive an update on the forward development by Sir Anthony Gormley. So it's Anthony Gormley. And the current demolition order in place from Northern County Council. So it's been a couple of months since the town council's met. So there's been an awful lot of information come out since the last town council. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give you a short piece on where we're at and then invite councillor Susan Fairlais-Aiken and councillor Penny Grennan to, to provide some more information, just to bring the town council right up to date of what's, what's happened, because there's been an awful lot of work going on. So conversation's been held of Sir Anthony Gormley and his team for many years, you know, more than two years. He, he has two foundations in the town. And I was also feeling sort of in the council, is that, you know, can we, can we get some sort of legacy out of this? Because in the main, most people don't know he's actually based in Hexham. It's very difficult to get really quiet on his, that he's actually based here for such an internationally renowned artist. So it's about two years ago, I, along with, along with a couple of others, met with Sir Anthony at his foundation. We started a conversation, you know, was there a case of doing press, some sort of like public art display in, in Hexham? And that conversation started, it's been, it's been going on for quite, quite a sort of time then. And that manifested itself into his team thinking about having a third site in Hexham. And that third site to cover sort of storage of these artefacts. Because, you know, I wouldn't be stupid and if you've ever seen Raiders of the Lost Ark, when at the very end, they put all the things in the stor- storage at the very end, it's a bit like that, it's just all these artefacts that he's worked on. So you have like things from, the one that caught my eye was a small, it was a quite a sizeable, but a small model of the age of the north. It's obviously just, it creates the, the, the model before creating the size of things. And there's various sort of art pieces that he has there. So, so it's a storage of these artefacts. Potential education centre for new arts and then potentially some sort of exhibition centre as well. So those conversations have been going on and he has then brought about a business case. So I'm going to hand over this to Suzanne, who's going to just give us a brief on what that business case actually is made of.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't expecting to be doing this with my son, but it has evolved into that. So it was the end of July now, I had a phone call from Sir Anthony Gormley because I've already kind of been working with the foundation, foundation earlier in the year to, to get to know about the fire station and how, in fact, I asked about it last autumn and again in February of this year, took the emails again to County Hall to ask about the site. So they knew we were interested, it was in my ward then, it's not been since May. So that was kind of on hold with the election and everything else. And then the next thing we knew, we saw the same notice, the demolition notice that Anthony saw when he was in town that week. And he was concerned that that, it was a, it was a dumb deal that that had happened. We didn't know about the demolition notice at all. And as Chair of Local Planning, I found that, found that a little bit astounding. So, and they knew our interest. So it was a case of putting a, a business case together with his team that would, that could be considered, once the demolition had halted, appalled, to put together that case that should have really have come in and been received properly. So it was, it was setting it out in terms that the council would understand, which is, I mean, we can just go, wow, Anthony Gormley and Hexham. But they, they need obviously figures for, you know, what it's going to bring to Hexham and jobs wise and will it be publicly open? And, you know, all of these questions. So that, that took a couple of weeks to kind of pull together. And I'm just going to read a bit of it and then councillor Grennan can follow up with what then happened, I think. Right, so that's the fire station. He has his heart set upon the fire station. It is a, a great bit of industrial twentieth century architecture, kind of self-attacked, modern-esque. You can kind of see how it would work. So he's come up with these designs that have been submitted. And his statement sort of reaffirms his commitment to Hexham. So he talks about founding preventing closure and loss of jobs there initially. But the sort of key lines just to lift out, but you've all got a copy now, I've handed it round so you can completely see in black and white what his vision is for the site in Hexham. The business case itself is very long and I'm happy to send that round as well. But this is, this summary is, is quite crucial in establishing why he wants this site and what it will offer Hexham. So it stands, where it stands is near his own boundary site. It's near the railway station, which is great access, obviously, for the town and visitors. There's two massive car parks down there, the Travelodge one and that one, so it's, it's great, it's accessible. We'd like to connect, he talks about a poem of work that councillor Kennedy has also mentioned as well, that would be given to the town in lieu of this. So he wants to offer this cultural offer to the nation nationally and internationally. The foundation, foundation would make its core collection available to the greater public as well as access to its archive and make it clear to the public that it increases the important role that Hexham plays in the evolution and exhibition of my work internationally. The vision would protect and preserve not only the fire station as an existing local landmark, but with the assistance of an international architect to complement it with an extension. The space would house major works, including Domain Field, preserving them for public interest and future generations. Skip a bit, supporting, he also wants to support emerging artists in the area. So that's a vital part of the foundation's mission, so that it would be available to local artists in Hexham, the studio spaces. There would be events through the year. He talks about his affection for the north, obviously, as councillor Kennedy says, not a lot of people know he's there. He is, I think he's been there twenty years. And he wants to celebrate, the fact that he wants to celebrate Hexham as well. I mean, last week he was in Uzbekistan and Dallas doing international events, Korea before that all the summer. So it's been kind of pinning him down and his team down to get this to the council, which was submitted the other week. The fact that he wants to bring it here is just, I just, I mean, it's mind blowing really. And if we lose this opportunity, which I'm finding we might, then, you know, that's it gone really. He really does want this site and I think our affirmation of his, you know, his commitment to it is, is really important. He really wants it to be community-led, ground-up support for this to happen. He doesn't want to dictate it, he wants us to want it here.
Okay, so, so the next piece of information I'm going to bring to the table is councillor Suzanne Fairlais-Aiken, who's already mentioned. As I said, we stumbled across a planning application, which was attached to a land post saying, the county council intended to demolish the fire station. Even though they'd known for two years or so that we were interested in some sort of legacy for Sir Anthony Gormley. So Suzanne did not know about it, she's Chair of Planning in Tyndale. I didn't know, I didn't know about it as a county councillor, it's a bit. The town council was not notified of it either. So Penny Grennan picked, picked that up and, and I'll let her take on the story.
Right, so I think the whole issue around this is absolutely extraordinary. And we keep saying this and we talk to people outside the county and they can't believe that what we're doing is we're having such a battle with our county council about whether you have a car park for bin lorries and a prefab for people to eat their sandwiches in who work on the bins, or we have an international institute for sculpture. And unfortunately, the county council do not seem to be listening, but worse than that, they are not behaving in a way that is open and transparent. So following the discussion of the application for prior approval for demolition of the building, which was put outside the old fire station on the twenty-eighth of July, I wrote to councillor Fairlais-Aiken as the head of planning at the county council, asking for an investigation about this matter because I understand that we're a major consultant, particularly in this area, and neither she nor, nor we knew anything about it. So I sent that email and she passed it on to the head of estates, who said that they could confirm that no decision had been made to demolish the fire station. And please keep with me because the devil is always in the detail. It is regressive that the prior notification application was made without wider notice to you and councillor Kennedy, given your interest in the site and we apologize for this oversight. Hold that. I can also prefer, I'm quoting, that councillor Sessford, as a local member of the site, was notified about this prior notification. So Trevor Sessford, the council Trevor Sessford, did know about this and he failed to tell us or anybody else. So we're picking up on that and we've done that through the planning committee, the last meeting of the town council, demanding to know why Trevor Sessford did not inform the town that this notice was being posted, but also asking again why it hadn't been, why nobody bothered to notify us. But then I got a long, it was a long email that was returned to councillor Fairlais-Aiken that I, that I have in front of me, which talks about an estates review. So there's an issue about the existing provision that we have in this town and for the wider area in terms of refuse and waste disposal. I think that's acknowledged, that the sites that they've got are not actually fit for purpose. The closest available site is the fire station. But there's a long, which I won't go into, a long set of paragraphs about the phases of the estates review. But the critical piece of information is that following this, which is what's being described, phase three will focus on a number of themes and towns, including Hexham. The work in Hexham has not yet started. In all activity delivered to date engagement with local members on proposed property review activity in their area has been a key part of the process. This will remain the case when it comes to Hexham. So they've put a notice up to demolish a key site, but they're going to ask us whenever phase three starts, what we think about it. And we had a site visit on Friday and it was very elegantly and coherently stitched up, I have to say, about what needed to be here, there and everywhere. But there was one comment that was made from councillor Sessford and it was agreed by the head of economic development, was that if that site was no longer available, he'd have to choose something else. Now, the county council are annoyed about the fact that we've gone public on this. And I, I personally, and I think everybody else might agree, think that posting that notice of demolition forced our hand to do that. And so there's a, there's a letter of support going out and people are continually writing, saying, please put my name down, down on it. We've had the photograph, we do not want to lose this. What we want to do is to find a solution that suits everybody. And knocking down the existing building is not it. So this is, this is where we're up to now. I, I have serious concerns because the camera report, which came out before the new chief executive was appointed, stated that Northumberland County Council was the worst county council in the country for officers ignoring the wishes of elected representatives. And I think that this totally amplifies the fact that not a lot has changed. So that's quite a long update, but I think it's very important to know that there are, that things are not being done in a straightforward and transparent manner. And the benefit to the town overall is huge and we fully appreciate that the costings of new sites for bins is actually real money. But how many times do we have to talk about cultural capital? How, how many times do we have to talk about the fact that the arts bring in eight pounds for every one pound spent? We just heard Johnny Hannah talking about that project at the, at the jail. This is all about Hexham being an arts town and not being a centre for parking for bin lorries. And it feeds directly into the motion that I would like to propose at point nine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, so, so thank you for, for that Suzanne Penny. And this sort of, I'll, I'll wrap a bit over now, we'll, we'll invite questions from the floor. So I, alongside others, have been negotiating long and hard. We've thought very constructively with the county council, I've had many meetings with the leader of the council and his deputy and, and the chief executive and the head of estates, explaining what we want. You know, Anthony Gormley's team's been involved in those meetings as well, you know, we're trying to explain what, you know, what we're trying to do here, the third site, the legacy of Anthony Gormley. You know, it has to be recognised, we all, we all get old, we all get old, you know, Anthony Gormley's in his mid-seventies now. So this is, this is the only opportunity we will get to deliver an Anthony Gormley legacy for this town. His team have made it quite clear that the old fire station, which remember, has been empty for ten years. Ten years. And on the occasion when we come up with an outstanding vision for the, for the usage of that site, all of a sudden the county council has a different plan. I've, I've said at the county council, look, there's two visions here, there is two visions. There's the Anthony Gormley International Exhibition Centre, or there's a lollipop. That's the two, that is the two visions we encountered here. Which one do you want, county council? Which one do you want county council? Because we know what we want. Within days, you know, and I've asked to Penny and others who, who organise that, we had three hundred people turned up, uh, for, for that photo shoot, uh, within days. And that just shows you the wealth of feeling that is, not just in Hexham, but obviously wider as well. I've really tried to put my, the pressure down as much as I can. Um, I said I wanted to negotiate this as privately as possible, um, with a, you know, to try and find as far as we could go. But the county council's aggressive stance of putting a demolition order out without us knowing, completely gossamming, I mean, how could they do that? How could they do that to people who they know who've got vested interest in this, spent all that time with a, you know, a man of substance in his, in his investment in this town, and yet they pull that trick? I, I, I've been really, really frustrated and so disappointed with the county council that I've said that to, to the chief executive and the leader, that I'm just staggered that that goes on. You know, they've tried, you know, they've had a bit of a opening for, for, for taking it into the press alongside, alongside others, but I said, "You left us with no other option. You threw the stone and we had to do something to, to come back and show the wealth of feeling." We wanted to do this constructively, we'd do, but the feeling is, is that, and I think, I think it's, you know, we, we came across it on Friday, is that, I've always said this about the county council, is the answer's no councillor, what was your question? And I feel as though that is another example of the county council's, um, feeling toward visions, you know, and actually trying to get something fabulous over the line, or do you want a lorry park? So, um, I mean, I'm sure you can sense our frustration or emotions in this, you know, the time that's been, been put in. Um, we are now at this point, um, you know, we've gone, you know, we are now trying to engage others into this, including the North East Men, um, we have backing of the, the, the Hexham P. Uh, we've had a letter from the Newcastle and Northumberland Society supporting us alongside, how many, how many have they let?
Over five hundred.
So alongside five hundred names from individuals, current organisations. I, that wraps it up, um, and I'll, I'll open up for questions really. Yes?
Why aren't they listening? Why don't we, why aren't they convinced by the evidence?
Exactly, yeah.
They've made a plan, they've made a plan and they want to stick to the plan. It's absolutely extraordinary, um, although they're all hard of theory, aren't they?
I've made some informed inquiries. I don't have the step of detail, this is actually new, new to me, but speaking to some of the councillors, um, if they don't get the sites, I understand it, they have to get, create a new depot. And the reason why they need that space is because of legislation that's come through that requires them to do it, and it would cost them another seven million pounds to create a new depot. So that's why, as I understand it, they tell you that they're dragging their feet on it. And then in terms of what, the understanding in terms of what they told me was the offer, it wasn't to create an art centre, this is new information, but to create a locker for his work, so there wouldn't be that people could get access. This might have changed since then, I don't know, this is, this, I'm just passing on second hand, but the, there's always been a conversation with the county council to try to get Anthony Goldley to make more of that site, but the plans that were put forward, same ones that they told me about, was to basically have his locker. And it wasn't until Anthony had passed on the, similar, this is just from what the P A said, was that it wasn't going to be available to, to be open to the public. Now, obviously if there's a new development since then, then that's, that's a different matter, but it's also, he's a, he's an internationally renowned artist, he's also incredibly wealthy and this is maybe something for the, for the county council to have a discussion with him about him buying on the open market. This is, this...
Can I ask?
I'll make some time and then I'll make a penny.
Uh, yeah, I think he, he wants a, a council site, he wants to buy a council site, he sees it as money backing to, um, yeah, local authorities and, uh, and yes, it would be the market price of that. Um, and as opposed to the county council, yes, they've got, they've got an idea of what it is. It's interesting, I thought that would be the angle because they, they seem to be very focused on the fact that it wasn't open to the public, even though this artist statement was said to them early on, it was one of those things that was sent. Now, the thing is, unlike politicians, artists do not promise, do not make promises that they can't keep. And, and that, that has very much come across with that, with the business case. So what they, the Foundation, Foundation is the charity behind Goldley and he is now seventy-four. And so at the moment, while he's, you know, an artist, operational, it will be, as it's laid out here. But once the Foundation, Foundation take over, in the event of him, in his passing, the idea is that that would be the, the site that would then open up to be public. And it's, it's hard to promise that without knowing, well, they're, they're finding it hard to quantify that in a way that the, the county council would understand. But definitely the public element is here, as you can see. I think the operational thing is interesting, we did walk around and I had a huge amount of sympathy for, for the site, but you just keep looking at it and thinking, really? Now, the depot is a hodgepodge of a site that's been kind of stuck together, I don't know if anyone's been down, and there's lots of bits to it. To me, there's still importercabs, the staff, that, you know, they moved from last year, from leaky portercabs to these newer ones, but it's still portercabs. Now, if I was them, I would be slightly more, and we did say this to them on Friday, more creative with the site itself. It's a huge site, it's got a public car park, it's barely used, no one knows it's there. I didn't know it was there, I'm popping the depot, which I shouldn't apparently. But, um, yes, so I think with the money that they could get from selling this mishmash of a site or an industrial estate to their most interested parties, because it would be snapped over multi-couns already there, roaring in the middle of the site, which makes it a nightmare. So you could take that money and the money that Anthony's going to give you and build something fit for purpose that's future-proof for exactly this, for this maintenance vehicle depot, um, that they need and the cargo and all the rest of it. To me, that seems, you're getting money to, to build something else, whereas this way maybe you've got to sort of knock stuff down and rebuild it. To me, that's, it's, it seems very, not only uncreative but illogical. But the, the thing is that we've hinted at in this as well, the, the estates team and you said, why do they not want to do this? You look around Hexham and there comes a, every meeting here and we have it, whether it's the middle school site, whether it's, it's sitting on sites for years and not getting around to doing anything about it. Now, I'm, I'm working the estates review, I was promised it last autumn at full council, I was promised it again in that email that we came in the year. It seems to me that this has taken quite a lot of time, these buildings are falling down, the council can't afford to repair them when they fall down as well. It's, it's a shocking waste of public money after nine, ten years of it being used once for a Covid site, that suddenly they have a plan to, and don't get me wrong, it's, I've seen the plans for the, the site, it's, it's an add-on, it's not even, it just feels stuck together and doesn't feel future-proofed.
I'll bring Penny in and then I'll pay you.
Yeah, just, I need to, I absolutely agree with everything that Suzanne has said, but I think it's actually a lack of understanding and this ha, this happens a lot, I think, because Moreport is a long way away, but we were talking about alternative sites to them on Friday, that they had never considered and nobody, I mean, this is their own plans they're not aware of, so somehow there's this sort of disjuncture between us here and the county council up there and it happens all the time, look at the shambles, the impact of those shambles being delayed by the county council, it's been absolutely appalling on the town, but on traders, particularly the market traders. So there's something about an unwillingness to come and, come here and ask us, apart from everything else, what we think and what advice we'd give and what sites and alternatives and solutions there are. They're, they're miles away and they've got a budget and they weren't spending money or not spending money in this particular way and there's no communication. And I think that's what we're up against. I have to talk about the value of an institute and what institutes do. My daughter works for a massive institute, they don't have people wandering in all the time, but the stuff is available to people and then they do out and facing work because that's what institutes do. And so it's like somehow we're on this planet that understands culture, understands the town, understands the needs of the town, we all work incredibly hard to make that the case. And then there's people with the budget and the authority who don't ever access that information or knowledge and I think it's a disgrace.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring in, I'll bring in Penny.
I don't know if we can do this, but it would be really interesting to find out what their costings are for the demolition of the building, um, because demolishing a building and clearing the site, that will cost millions of pounds. So to put that against what they will actually get for that site by selling it would be a very interesting exercise, I think, if we can ask them that. Um, because that then actually partially destroys their argument, because it's going to cost them more to demolish it, clear the site than if somebody is prepared to pay for it.
Yeah, and flood-proof it as well, that's quite important as well, it's on a flood plain, the reason it was evacuated, the site was moved, the fire station site was moved, was exactly that, and yet they wanted to put these new vehicles on it.
So could we sort of play a little game a bit and ask them what those figures are for, as they must be?
We're getting excited.
Just wondering, if it's worth going to Kim Guinness and the North East Marry, if it's cost is the issue and they don't want to spend an extra seven million on a, on a depot, then maybe Kim could use some of her budget to, to kind of fund it and then that means the, the council and, you know, to run it there. So it's obviously something that she would honestly happen in the region, so.
I'm listening to the debate and I've changed my view slightly. Um, I'm driven by the commercial aspect and you mentioned it there, Finn, I've written it down, how much comparison costs. The council will, county council will argue about value for money, rate as money, if they have to pay X amount plus to something extra. And you talk, Penny, correctly so, about cultural value as well, I think, I think that's very important. But to add cultural value, we haven't got to wait for somebody to die. And so now's the time to, to negotiate, you know, the educational aspect of a visitor attraction. And, you know, you may find this bizarre, I would like the county council to be involved financially, if that was the case, rather than just waving a flag to actually invest in something like that, that is a cultural sector, that could attract visitors to the town. I think that's a great opportunity for us. But if I'm looking at it commercially, if there is education in there, if there is visitor attraction in terms of exhibition, it's a, it's a no brainer. It's absolutely, it, it commercially, it stands up and, and those pounds of, of visits spent, uh, people enjoying the town, coming to it, enjoying living here, that's what we pay our rates for, you know? And, and I've changed my view, I think I, I'm, I was neutral before, but having listened to the debate, I know it's passionate, speeches and everything, if it stacks up commercially, I would vote in favour of any proposal.
Right, I'll just, before I break Suzanne, is there, is there any, anybody else? Any more questions straight up, break Suzanne?
Yeah, just to, just to say back to that, I'd like to thank you for listening, Stephen, that's all. Um, yeah, the public money thing's interesting, he doesn't want to take public money, he wants to give the money to the public.
That's a capital receipt.
It's a purchase.
It's a purchase. So he doesn't want to take money. I know, I know there might be a vision that the county council want this all singing, all dancing centre, he doesn't want that, this is what, how he wants to do it, he wants to give it the public money back, as it were. And, and it is hard to quantify, cap, you know, of the arts, it's very hard, you know, I've worked in it all, all my working life. And, you, you know, the Arts Council can come up with a report in twenty sixteen, I think it was, that quantifies the eight pounds to a pound back. And you look at things like the South Bank Centre, you look at the Baltic and you look at cultural regeneration and Tate St Ives is another big one, and that's sort of comparable scale and that's eleven million pounds a year to the local economy and it's a small gallery in St Ives. So it's, it's, it's putting that to the council has been part of the business case because Anthony Goldley likes to work in those figures, he doesn't trust them, but they're there and I think that's why it's important that it comes to Hexham beyond the cultural value, you know, the, the revenue, the footfall, everything is there, the full package.
Right, I've, I've said that rapidly, so, so, so there's been quite a good debate. Um, right, because we have got the, um, the motion, whatever, but, you know, the debate didn't continue, but I'm, I'm just going to wrap, wrap this part of the, the meeting agenda even up. So, no, points have been raised, all good ones, all solid ones. Um, so I'm going to just talk about, about a couple of things, I'll, I'll just, I'll just throw into this, um, risk. So Anthony Goldley's got two foundations here, um, employees, people here, all the works that he does all over the world is actually completed here. You know, what, what kudos will you get from, for, you know, from, from Hexham for this? And this, this would be the third plank to his plan, is that, you know, the foundations are like, you know, design, they create, and then there will be the storage, the education and the education. So you get the, you get the final piece of that jigsaw for Hexham and finally we're going to get something where Anthony Goldley being a head of, actually being, um, shown to, to the rest of the world. If he doesn't get, get this, you know, and I've, I've said this to the county council, there is a risk that he goes elsewhere, does he take his foundations elsewhere and think, actually, Northumberland County Council is completely unsupported of a being, why should I stay? You know, Gateshead put the aims of the north up. I can just imagine if, if that aims of the north had a lead in Northumberland and what sort of response Northumberland County Council may have given him. Oh no sir, you put it in the wrong place, you know, those types of things. You know, there's always a chance somebody else could take it away from us, so there's a big, big risk of that. This is his legacy, we have one chance of this and no more. Once that building is demolished, I think, I think it's over, to be honest. Um, sites, um, the West Road set, been sitting there, county council bought it fifteen years ago to put the new fire station there. Didn't have, spent all that money, so we talk about the county council and the public in the saving money, spent a fortune on purchasing that and what's there now? Desolation. So it's another example of the county council having a plan, not delivering it and actually building another fire station elsewhere. So it ended up having, for one fire station, it had three separate sites. The one behind the, the, um, the hospital, the one that had paid loads of money for the West Road and just left empty, and, and the redundant site that's been there for ten years. So we can't talk about Northumberland County Council being the saviour of the public purse because if there's been any waste, there's nothing more wasteful than empty sites. So that, I'll say that. And why can't the county council use, say that West Road site? It's part of a bigger, um, plan for, um, their depots, um, off the flood plain, for example. We've never seen the county council go, actually, we could restack the current sites that they have there, that's sizable, there's a, there's a car park that's got thirty car parks sites adding even though existed. It doesn't need to be there, we've just, we've just built expensive car parks next to, next to the, um, travel lots and stuff. So that car park does need to be there, that, that space could be used. And there's another fifty, fifty space car park, which again, so eighty spaces could be trimmed down to a smaller number for their vehicles. And the, the use of that space and then restack the whole site because it is a hodgepodge. There's, there's, you know, there's vehicles here, there's a, there's a two-storey prefab here, there's a, there's two car parks here, it's a mess. It hasn't been planned properly, it's just a mess. And basically that mess is getting too full for them, so that could be restacked. So that, um, so I, I, I think... So I think there's just a lack of imagination by the county council. It's just like, we're doing this tough guys. Find somewhere else. And to me, it's just shocking thinking. So we'll wrap it up with that. We'll obviously keep you posted on where we're going now. But we're now going to go to item number nine, where we continue the debate, of course, which is to consider a motion concerning the old fire station raised by councillor Brennan. So councillor Brennan, if you could read out your motion. The rules of debate are on here. So everybody can see how that works. So I'll hand over to councillor Brennan.
Thank you very much. So the motion is Hexham Town Council fully supports Sir Anthony Gormley's plan to purchase from Northumberland County Council the old fire station in Hexham and to convert it into an international sculpture foundation. Furthermore, Hexham Town Council calls on Northumberland County Council to fully support the old fire station sale to Sir Anthony Gormley as it is in line with its own cultural vision and Hexham's aim to become the first arts town in Great Britain.
Thank you. So I'll look for a second. Susan, that was it, second is first time up. We will now go to debate. So who wants to speak on the debate?
Could I ask one question?
Yes, Stephen.
If Penny and I said to commercially purchase, then the argument against it is flawed. Because perception is, from the people I've spoke to, that perhaps it wants it on the cheap or there isn't a realisation that there's a commercial receipt for this. And I take others, you know, face point of view to demolish it will cost X amount. So it's a commercial, the word commercial in it. So it's a straightforward choice then between something that is culturally superb and a lorry park. And it's a straightforward choice then. The argument against it is that it's not commercial. It's shock off of it.
Well, I think on that, I'm ready for asking.
I completely support the motion, but I think with a slight risk, the way that councils and programmes and funding is that there might be some money out paid for demolition. Or is it worth either getting the motion or separately getting a commitment from NCC to park the demolition proposal until such time as the discussions are reached their conclusion? Because a project I've been involved with, they've had pots of money that need to be spent by April. And demolition goes ahead and then to the pleasure because of the deadlines for spending the money is the driver of the project, not the merit of the scheme. So is NCC parking the demolition? The demolition company going on Sunday?
Yeah, they have.
If we want to squash.
Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, so they have given us that undertaking. Phil, will you go and ask a question?
No, I was just going to say fantastic to everybody for all the work done during the summer. And I fully support the motion.
Yeah, I support the motion as well. And I'd even as far as to say that even if it doesn't commercially stack up, the value of the culture that Anthony would bring is of great value to the town. And without culture, what's the point of it being commercially viable?
So I think it's a very compelling vision. I guess always think about what the worst case scenario is. And he could be around for quite a long time, which is a great thing. I hope he's producing work for a long time. But if the site can be built and then it could end up just sitting as a lockup for ten, twenty years. I guess you'd be making sure the council maybe did have a covenant on it, around it being opened up because we know from lots of sites being developed, brought up by developers. Sounds like Anthony and his team aren't those types of people, but we've certainly looked the hard way that things can be bought up and they're not used as they're intended to. Maybe a covenant. And then also, I guess, from our perspective, not a lot of money spent in Hexham. So I mean, where's the loss to us really? If we get a nice, if they end up not spending seven million on the debt for Hexham, they'll just be spending it somewhere else on there. I'm not sure what the choice is for us. Are they going to be not spending something else on the roads or something? But perhaps bringing another partner to help spend some of those costs would probably help as well.
Right, anyone else? Yeah, I fully support it as well. I'm quite surprised that nobody's doing an independent investment appraisal of the two options. It seems to me that, you know, there's two straightforward options there. And why isn't there an investment appraisal going on? It's a great point.
So can you ask that? How do you ask for it?
We could ask Sarah. Might have committed.
My only worry with that is, I mean, I have had best value for maybe like since I was elected. And their definition of value and best value is very, very different to mine. As Tom says, it's about, I mean, you've heard all this a lot of the girl, but it's legacy. It's things that you can't quantify. You can't quantify everything. Everyone wants everything in black and white in it. It doesn't always happen, you know, value to me is, yeah. And I would be.
It can happen for one pound. I mean, there are measures in the playbook which would allow you to bring that into an investment appraisal. Which is why I say it should be independent and not some official that's got investors' interest. You know.
Yeah, that's a good call.
A bit of a hint.
Yeah, just referring again to sort of following on from what you said before. You know, if we can find out what it's going to cost them to demolish it and clear the site, it might be a complete no brainer. Because without having to do, I mean, obviously it's worth doing that work anyway. But if it comes back, it's going to cost ten million or, you know, to clear the site, it's just bolter. It's just going to cost more.
It does sound like there's an awful lot of cost in the option to build a lorry park. You know, it just, you know.
So they could actually do better by accepting the money from Anthony Gormley. They've done some money in their pocket instead of having to actually spend on it.
That was a market valuation on the site.
Right, right. Because is anybody else wants to speak? I'll speak and then I'll hand back to Penny. Okay, I'll speak. Right, so I'll just go then and update. So the cost of everything, but the value of nothing. And that's what springs to mind.
Springs to that, yeah.
The cost, the county council seem to know the cost of everything and the value of nothing. That's what to me springs to mind here. You know, hardships and pens. Pick a new shop and that type of thing versus something that is a great value. You know, we'd have this as a seven point for Hexham. So it wouldn't just be about Anthony Gormley and his exhibitions and that. It's actually much broader and wider for Hexham, you know, and the ambition to be the arts town. This would be the major plan of that arts town if we had that. This would bring a different type of visitor to Hexham. This would put Hexham on the map for that type of industrial art. The old fire station, you know, I beat the ball for the car violin, old fire station where they did a fantastic music centre there. It's absolutely tremendous. And similarly, they did the same in Sunderland. You know, and they've done fantastic venues out of old fire stations. That could have easily been demolition forgotten about, you know, lots of it in the history of time. But they didn't do that. They actually reinvented those buildings into something. And we could do something similar here. I do think the county council just need to be more imaginative. That they've got other sites that they can use as part of a patchwork of doing stuff and they could re-engineer what they've got already. I think for me, it's just like, they don't want to do it. They just want to move the fence, knock the fire station over. I mean, they've said in the first instance, it would just be somewhere to park cars and in time they'll put a wellbeing room, which is basically somewhere for men to have their bait and move things around there. That's what I am massively worried about. Is that they demolish it and it ends up just being a prefab put on there and they painted a few more lines and they put a shed up somewhere. That's what I think, you know, that's what I can envisage. And we will all just be looking and go like, what a opportunity. Absolutely missed. I would thought any other council would be grasping at this and thinking like, wow, wow, thank you, God, thank you, Anthony Gormley, for what they're doing. Not this negative, just industrial, you know, maintenance of humanity. You know, this is something, you know, this is creative. This is something very, very different. And for even to have this tussle, I just find remarkable, to be honest. But that's just me. So we'll now go back to the mover of the motion, we'll start that. So Penny, if you want to sum up before we go to the debate.
Yes, I'd just like to, because we keep coming back to this councillor kitchen, is that there is either a wrongful or an accidental misunderstanding of what this foundation would be. So the thing that has been mentioned also in this discussion is that, and I quote, "With the potential acquisition of the old fire station in Hexham standing conveniently between the studio and not two foundations, there's a studio where the design work happens and a foundry where the fabrication happens, a new era of public facing activity would begin." I'm quoting from the statement made by Anthony Gormley. "We would like to connect this with a permanent work gifted to the town of Hexham that will stand in the river on the west side of the Hexham Bridge across the town, visible through both the bank and the bridge. We are getting our equivalent of the Angel of the North. We are getting the third part of the site, as you describe it, councillor Kennedy. The foundation building would include a gallery in which key works could be exhibited. Supporting emerging artists is a vital part of foundations mission and this facility would serve that purpose, while also being made available to local artists in Hexham." And what isn't there to mind? So he's obviously going to store his archives here. How fantastic is that? The nature of archives is that people access them. He's going to encourage local artists to exhibit there. He's going to bring on and support emerging sculptors of his sort of calibre. And we're going to get a statue that people will see as they come into the town. And, you know, I don't understand why they're reducing everything to money because I would like to draw your attention, you've talked about St Ives, but I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that the Bluegrass Festival, which runs every year here, comes in at under ten thousand pounds. About eight thousand pounds it costs. It doesn't cost us anything because we externally raise the money. And the benefit to the town is unbelievable in terms of generating money from visitors. I go and talk to all the cafes, I talk to the old jail, coincidentally. They could not believe the number of people who visited the jail, who went and bought their food, who went and bought things from Hexham. We've got to stop reducing the life of the town to whether it costs five pounds to empty your bin or five pounds fifty if we're bringing that extra fifty p in through other means. But because it appears to be non-tangible, because as a society we think artists should do everything for free, which is bonkers. I just invite somebody somewhere, and I invited the head of culture and economic development or whatever her title is, to look at all those towns that have Gormley sculptures in. All of them that have happened so far in this country and see what the measurements of benefit is. I cannot believe we're having this discussion. It's like I am operating in a parallel universe to the county council. They have to provide a service. We are providing a cultural service that will actually bring more money in than they're been emptying will. And I would like to move the motion. Thank you.
Very good. Right, so we now move to, as you can see, we now go to the vote. So the voting is by show hands. Members could call for a name vote following debate. But before votes are cast and should be supported by at least one other member. In the event of a tie, da, 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 you can meet that. So we now want to, so you've got the motion in front of you. I'm now going to ask for those in favour of the motion. Please raise your hands. Okay, so that's the last. Okay, so that motion, so Andrew will now send that motion to the chief executive and the leader of the council. Do that tomorrow, prior at least. If you can copy all the councillors in, it'll be a sample of them. We'll do that.
So in reply to the question, could that motion also go to the officers or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, 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 yep. Right, okay, so that's that one. Very, very good. Right, item number ten. So update on Hexham's potential development sites. Little school, anything for the vote? No. Old bus station, not now. Toilets.
Chased that, but no answer.
I got a request from the MP to know what was going on with the Wentworth toilets today.
West Road, nothing. Although I have suggested that it had been part of this design for recycling. Police forces, any more news on that?
Apparently there's going to be a tree preservation order, request coming in or felling of a number of trees on that site in preparation for, presumably some subsequent.
It's a tree preservation order, I think they've put in an application. That one, for trees.
The tree preservation is there.
Well, conservation, sorry, notification for every tree that's over fifty mil wide at chest height. So basically we're going to clear the site. So whether we discuss this at the planning infrastructure meeting, it seems is the wrong approach to a site to assume that it's totally clear rather than going to assess its merit first and see, well, that might be landscape, features, lot of trees. So I think we should object to that, but we should have time to look at it from the planning.
Architecture. Union workhouse.
Have we had a response from our letter to?
No, we haven't had any response other than what you alluded to in the press.
Yeah, so we sent that motion at the last meeting, which was two months ago, to say that NCC should proactively, I forget if that word, proactively engage with potential acquisition of the site to provide affordable housing. Not necessarily put almost entirely on NCC. We haven't had a formal response from that, but council on council put a call in the press. So if he chaired the planning, housing and planning committee, so he would have called up the press saying that it was a non-start to any acquisition of the site for social housing. But he hasn't actually, you know, had the courtesy to reply formally to us about that. So I wonder whether we need to respond to his. Once we're put down, just to say, you know, we think that NCC should be looking actively at acquisitions and have sent some suggestive wording around.
Well, I can send that in, but there's also the, whether it's something that can go through the Hexham public as well.
Yeah. That's normally where those conversations.
That's the Hexham pub.
The next one. I don't know what we've got.
We did get sent one.
Did you? Did you have that one seen? Right.
But we don't, you don't give the fee.
Well, you would take, because you would never have been a member of that long site.
Yeah. But you don't think any sort of public?
You can't spring to the Hexham pub. That's all, because it is housing. So it would be quite interesting to have this perspective on Hexham.
Well, I can resend that to the mentioned Hexham pub within that.
So the body of my text, I mean, there is a meeting, you know, what I wrote for later yesterday, you know, there is a meeting at full council at NCC. you know, what I wrote, I guess, there, you know, there is a meeting at full council at NCC on Wednesday. And should we be asking councillor, the councillor there, you know, why NCC is in receipt of £6 million worth of funding for affordable homes, but isn't prepared to invest any of that in Hexham as far as we know? So would any of our councillors be prepared to table that question at the meeting?
At Hexham, maybe.
At the full council on Wednesday.
And then more, you got a question, didn't you?
So you're going to off the.
Yep, yeah. But I think, I think it's more that, I would put that on Hexham.
I think you raised it better than value raised.
It is, absolutely.
You've got £6 million and you are spending it and yet you're all, we're comparing that with a lorry park.
Right. The shambles, I've raised this with the lead of the council and the chief executive on numerous occasions. I've since written to them just recently and said, hello both, as I have raised before, the Hexham shambles is taking an important amount of time to complete. I pass it regularly and rarely see work being conducted. The public and shopkeepers say have similar views and it's very hard to defend. Market traders and shops are stating traders being affected. We have a series of events lined up soon, AJ's spook night, fireworks and remembrance. I do hope these will not be affected by the work. Excuses such as pigeons nesting is not going down well in Hexham. Someone said to me, if the work had had been on site, the pigeons would not have nested in the first place. A good point. I did ask for this work to start in the January, February time, conduct deconstruction such as roof tiles taken off before construction in the springtime. This advice was ignored with earth not starting until May, June, hence the nesting. This has been the best summer weather, so no excuses on the climatic front. Can I have an assurance of what day the work will be completed, please? And I've been told I will get a full response. So I am just utterly frustrated by that shambles, but it's just remarkable with the slow pace. Psychopath. Any news on that?
No, it's looking good. Again, we get some nice feedback from residents, actually, it's brilliant. Yeah, it's started and you can see the progress and where it's laid down. People keep parking on it, so please don't.
Railway buildings and motor tower.
Letters have been sent, but not had any response.
Western Methodist, nothing there. All roads, Beale Street, nothing. Prospect House.
Yeah, pretty much most of the site's gone off sale.
Brand, brand last, very good. And Abbey House.
Nothing. I believe so. Well, if you look on the. Many different names.
I won't do it. Right. Okay. Forthcoming events, I was just going to put this in the main announcements.
Wait, last time you said you wanted a separate section.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know. You know me. Right, forthcoming events, yes, you're absolutely right. Forcoming events, right. 3rd of November, 3rd of October to the 16th of November, we have, here, the Earth is going to be displayed in the Hexham Abbey. I'm sure it will be spectacularly successful as our moon was, so look forward to that. 24th of October is the Forum's Oscars. If you've ever been to that, it's a really, really grand event. Some of our special needs schools and colleges put some movies on of the work they've done before. Another movie is played. 25th of October is spook night. And this is why I'm very concerned about the shambles, because obviously they do use some of that space around there. 1st of November is fireworks. The 1st of November is Electric Dreams, which is at the library. The 9th is Remembrance of November. And the 21st of November is the Christmas lights switch on, which we've, you know, we've been having loads of meetings about these, just to make sure that these are all in place. There's a lot of hard work going on in the background just to get things in place.
Could I just note, notify that on the 4th of October is the First Hexham Arts Fair that's being held at the Queen's Hall, and it's for groups that participatory are, so people can join.
Have you got, have you got eight posts that we can circulate?
It's the ones being done, I think.
Right, okay.
Take your diary.
All right, that's that. Right, that's the forthcoming events. Main announcements. Well, we've had, so just looking back, we've had, I attended, I was invited to the Hexham Abbey in support with Roy Dalison, who's one of the people behind the scenes of the Abbey. They are currently looking to get investment from one of the, you know, one of the English Heritage, or it may be, to support some investment into the Hexham Abbey. Here, Hexham has several, I think, I think it was five or six or something, pieces of art called the Dance of Death, which is here. Several large churches and cathedrals around England have them, but it appears Hexham has the greatest, but they're all like kind of not really known about. So they're wanting to make a bit of a song and dance at death about it. So that and a bit more of that investment they want. So they're putting a business case together to request investment through that base. And I've written the letter of support from the town council on that basis. Seems like a long time ago, but we had the Bluegrass, which was outstanding. You know, we were blessed with weather again, which depends on what you said, how popular it was. I attended the Lard and Hardy, Sunderland. What was it, no, it's not, she was, it was over the top. Lard and Hardy Association came for their third annual event at the Hexham Forum. So I attended that, that was great, beautiful. And in sports news, I'm delighted to tell you that the ladies' section of Hexham tennis won their league in Northumberland, the Durham League, winning all our matches, very, very well done. And their veterans' team came runners-up, they did fantastically well. And in the men's team, which I play for both teams, and I'm delighted to tell you that we won, the men's team won the league that we played in the Northumberland, the Durham League. We won the league and got promoted without losing. And similarly in the veterans, we also won that league and without losing a match and we promoted as well. So what a stunning set of results.
Chills all round.
Good moments still a dream. So there we go. There's an announcement. Right, to agree, the council's in. The reconciliation page first of all. Do you want to give any comments here?
Not really, everything balances, so that's what you can say for a reconciliation.
Hopefully the case for that.
So I'll get fair to sign that off at the meeting. And the receipts and payments is just well up to, up to the end of August.
Any questions on it, Jim?
I think the key thing before committees is that we'll be starting the process next month of setting budgets for next year. So the next round of committee meetings, to be mindful of that in terms of whether we need any more or less resources for activities.
Okay, I think, okay, right. Next one is, yes, all approved, thank you all. So the next one, 40 to nod to the approval, it's a committee meeting, so. 20th of June is the community engagement, page one, page two. Anything to say on that one? Oh, yes. Planning and infrastructure. Second of all, sorry.
So, do you know, I think I must have forgotten the missing item. I put it down, I'll follow you.
Second of all, this is the planning infrastructure, page one, page two, three and four. Next one is planning and infrastructure, 1st of July.
It was there, it wasn't there?
A lot of young men's projects. Page one, two, three and four. And planning and general purposes, AV for June, page one, two, three, okay? Good. Correspondent, correspondent.
So we've had the usual set correspondents from NALP, CAM, CBA, Ru Rubbleton, Chris List. In addition, we've had some communication about the noise solution from toxins of Prada. Zeristan Icewood, Brink, and Exmeas, could you please look to see what you can do about the unacceptable noise of banging and flapping that we have as possible with seven energy. Noise is horrendous to the stage I'm having, where earplugs in my own room, can't open my windows. I'm not the only one affected by this noise, something needs to be done as soon as possible. I hope you give this your ocean support.
So that's not, not in all, or?
No, it's affecting people. We had a report of an accident at the Rocket Park playground that we're going to look at the signage, see if everything is as it should be. It seems, I mean, it's always unfortunate when an accident happens, but it seems that all the signage was as it should be. There's an email passed from adult councillors earlier today from Alison Smith about inappropriate behaviour that she witnessed. Just to make the town council aware, I think you've all received that email. And there was a further email from Hexham Community Led Housing, asking a number of different things. One was about adding Adrian House onto our list of sites, which you may wish to do. Union Workhouse update, which I think was largely covered by councillor Higgins. And about Abbey Cottage, having had an update from councillor Sessford that was erroneous. And that's it, I think.
Hi, can you repeat that? What did you just say? What was the wrong news?
Oh, the, I'll read it all over in a minute, please.
Yes, thank you.
Abbey Cottage is normally named Abbey House Clinic, and there was an update read by the clerk from councillor Sessford, who stated, albeit erroneously, that conversion of the building was progressing at a snail's pace, and therefore nothing could be done. It is clear that development is not progressing at all, that the work's completed today may well need retrospective planning approval, in brackets, the attic room, and that the building is all but abandoned. Since this is a grade one listed building, the local authority can and should intervene with section 205 disamenity order. Given that the building's ground floor has been boarded up for many years, this inaccurate report from councillor Sessford should not be accepted without question.
Thank you.
So I felt I struggled with this, I was just thinking, why is that organisation writing directly to the county council? Than the town council? Because it's not, we don't do collections.
No, we can't do that, sir.
I mean, I just asked, asked, write direct to the county council? The county council, who's in over the whole of that? It seems to be like we're adding a little bit of change completely.
Well, the much of the NCC doesn't give, you know, the attraction when you complain and they may think that we might be able to exert some additional influence of evidence. I mean, I think with all of the buildings on that list, there's a clear disamenity issue more. You know, it would be a bad idea if you ask it for future margin or for future meeting to update from the head of planning or conservation manager, her views on the disamenity of the right and the stolen sites.
I think through, through the council clerks, I've got an opportunity to put some direct questions to head of planning. What constitutes good grades for a section 205 older than I do, please?
Well, it's, you know, certainly the disamenity of the area by detrimental appearance. So all the stolen sites that are sat behind a wall and all this border of windows in the public park of disamenity. And while the gentleman who's developed the clinic, from the clinic, can take his time off, but if that does not, you know, once you've got a start on a building, on a permission, you can take fifty years. But, yeah, disamenity, you need to have a separate line of discussion, council.
Yeah. Just after this, so I should have mentioned this, I forgot to mention on the list. 8th of October, there's a county council, a parish council joint meeting in the Mott. So I can make that, just going to come in later. So I would encourage as many councils as possible to go there and benefit the, the council. Everything from buildings of gold to the local transport plan that regularly gets ignored or thrown. That's 8th October at the Mott, although there will be circulation of the dates.
Sorry, but I can say that.
Yeah, 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 very good.
I need to catch up on this chat, I'm sure there's stuff going on, right? But what role does the town council have in master planning for the area? Because if we could put together some sort of plan and then be able to kind of make it appealing to developers, so these sites are kind of combined and use some high design standards, I was talking about.
I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, some developments elsewhere where they tend to have really high spec, and that's been very much more problematic for them. So I don't know much about that, because it's a real pride of the town with these empty properties, isn't it? We seem to have got ourselves into a bit of a...
There has been more done on Hexham.
Yeah. Let's say with the vast, vast, the economic, what they're looking to do to, whether they still view that as being an up-to-date document or whether they have any intention of updating that document at all, because it was, it was quite an adept script, but times have moved on with some of those buildings and certainly owners of the buildings have changed and potentially their perceived views. But I think, I think in, in terms of what's relatively achievable, I think getting that, get that document refreshed would be a good thing to, to call the council to do.
There is the neighbourhood plan not needed as well.
Yes, yes.
Which is probably another group that's sort of...
Yeah, so I'd certainly recommend that the planning infrastructure have been get up all the way and be able to be planning, especially for the new buildings, we lack any planning. Right, good, okay.